Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 10, 2022. It is 6:05, and it's the meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee, and we're at the North Boardroom.
Paula Johnson?
Present.
Jessica Brown is present. We have a quorum. Also in attendance, we have Mr. Dan Donovan.
Perfect. I guess it's just you tonight, Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Okay, so all the questions go to you. Shaun's not here. So the first thing on our agenda is the CTE Equipment Reserve.
Yes, so CTE had some equipment needs. Let me give you a little background first. We have an old reserve that has been sitting on the books for a while, has a balance of $17,000 in it. We also have another CTE reserve that we fund each year with the money we get from the state for sending students that come to our CTE program. So we're putting that in a new reserve. When this was first set up, it wasn't done correctly using all the various legal language necessary. So we set up the new account. We're funding that differently. So there is $17,000. We spoke with CTE and said, you know, it is available. They had need for certain pieces of equipment that they could not get through the Perkins funding, and their operating budget doesn't have enough money to make the purchases. So we figured this would be a good use of these $17,000. The total that they're actually requesting is $13,533. And in the packet, it talks about each one of the items, what is needed at South and what is needed at North. So there's things like electric lawn mowers for the power mechanics course, and there's a new bandsaw for woodworking. And for the fax programs, there's a new washer, dryer, refrigerator. I could use a new refrigerator, too. And then there's some more at the biotechnology program. And so that's the list. The total is $13,533, $8,006.23 at South and $4,009.10 at North. Any questions?
Okay. Then I'm going to make a motion to approve the purchase of the various CTE equipment per the memo dated May 10, 2022, using the Reg Voc Ed Capital Reserve Fund in the amount of $13,533.48 from account 91.7676.991300.71000.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
The next one is the SAF Audit 2020. Mr. Donovan?
Okay, so this, I had handed out, this is the actual, the audit books, I think, that we get each year. Now, the SAF stands for Student Activity Funds. If you look at the beginning of the audit book, it will show that the amount of cash in student activity funds throughout the district was $777,926. So that's typically what the balance is between $650 and $850. And each year, we have been using lately Plodzik and Sanderson to do the audit of the student activity funds. This audit is for June 30, 2020. And as you say, it's like, well, wait a minute, we're two years behind. Typically, what's been happening with this audit is they'll come in in the fall. So let's say the year ends June of 2019. They'll come in in the fall, review the audit. They'll review all the paperwork, and they'll get back the audit to us and the board, because this is officially a board audit, so that you can ensure that these funds, which are collected by students, are being properly taken care of. So, but what happened with this audit was they were working on it. COVID came. The records are kept at each school with the business secretary at each school. They weren't in the buildings. The buildings were closed down. So it took a lot longer to get this audit done. This audit is what I, I would not call this a very good audit for us. There's a lot of things that they discuss in here that we need to clean up. Some of them were also from the previous year. But keep in mind, by the time we got to this, we're sort of a year behind. So they, they make, they make notations about things, and the year's almost over by the time we get the audit. So we don't even have time to respond to them until the year after that. So a little bit of it is a timing issue. But we have, and we've had a lot of new secretaries in the buildings over the last couple of years working on this. So we're doing a retraining program of all those people. We're, we're sending out information, which is mentioned in this letter, being a little more firm with people about what they need to do with these funds. There's, there's specific rules and regulations they really need to follow. And it's not like when you feel like it, it's all the time. So some of the things listed here that were in the audit that we've, we're getting out to the various schools now. So really, it's the, if you think about it, the funds come in from students. They're put into specific funds. They're supposed to be used for the specific purpose that the students generated the funds. So if there was a fire in Nashua, and a bunch of students at Nashua South collected funds for those fire victims, so to speak, the money has to be used for that. They can't, like, send half the money, hold on to the rest, and go buy something else with it. It has to be very specific. So class field trips and field trip expenses. The auditors are saying they want to see more detail, because they want to see a list of who went, the students and the chaperones. There has been, over the years, some times where maybe chaperones were getting paid for with student funds and things like that. That's not supposed to happen. There's a thing that came to mind, the second item on the memo, approval of employee reimbursements. If an employee incurs the expense for the students, let's say they use their own credit card or whatever reason they use their own funds, and we're reimbursing them, if it's more than $500, we actually have a policy that says the superintendent or designee needs to approve that. We had not been following that policy. It was being approved by the school, the principal, but it was not being sent to central office to be approved by either the superintendent. It would probably be me or Derek that would actually sign it. So we're, we're putting that in place. We'll probably bring that policy forward to see if $500 makes sense. It's been around a long time. Maybe we should increase that slightly. But that's something where we're, we're going to start doing going forward. The other note, as I mentioned earlier, about student-related, these have to be spent on student-related disbursements. There's been a few times when schools have taken some of the leftover funds and used them to buy something for the faculty room or something like that. That's, even though the students said, you can do that, that's not what the activity was set up for. So we have to clamp down on that. Gift card purchases. The auditors have been telling us for the last couple of years, if you want to give out gift cards, which some gift cards are purchased, and then they're given to students, that's what they're typically done. They want a list of which students got it. And that hasn't been taking place. So the good thing about that, there's not lots of gift card purchases. Timely deposits. When checks come in, we want the checks deposited in the bank within that week. We hear that, you know, sometimes secretaries will say, I don't have time. I was too busy that week. Well, we don't want the checks sitting around. We don't want the cash sitting around. We need to get it in the bank. So we have to, you know, we're going to work with them to say, okay, well, we'll go pick it up and bring it in, or, but we want to get those deposits in a more timely fashion. And then the deposit and withdrawal slips, that they're all completely approved by the correct people. For the most part, that's being done. But when you do an audit of all the data, you'll find some. There's been a few that didn't have the correct signatures. And there were a couple of times when the specific activity didn't have enough money in it, and they cut a check. So there's still money in the account, so the check doesn't bounce, and then the money comes in later. But the, the new rule is if that account has $100, you can't cut a check for $150. You have, you can only spend the $100. You need to wait for the deposit to come in before you disburse the funds. The other thing the auditors mentioned, so we'll be doing this over the next year, is the policies. They suggest we review the policies every three to four years, which I think we, as, as a district as a whole, we need to review a lot of our policies, as you guys are probably aware. And there's also a note in here about, there is a trip to, that this high school was taking. It's considered an ELO, an Extended Learning Opportunity. It's a trip to Hawaii, and it's managed by a specific teacher. And the accounting for that, there was lots of money, because think about it, you bring in 50 kids or so to Hawaii, that's a lot of money. And the accounting for that was certainly not adequate as far as the, the auditors are concerned. And basically, when I started looking into it, I agree. We have met with that teacher. We have met with the principal. We've talked about it. The good thing is, the next couple of years, there wasn't, because of COVID, there was no Hawaii trip. They are thinking of doing one next year. But we've sat down, we've talked with them. We said, look, we really need to tie this down. We need to see, we'll pay for things. He was putting lots of things on his own credit card and then reimbursing himself. That was one of the biggest issues that the auditors had. And then they didn't feel that the backup that was provided was adequate. So because of the volume of dollars involved, we really need to take a look at that. So we've, we've worked with the teacher thus far. When they begin that process, which they would probably start this summer, potentially booking some airline tickets or putting deposits on airline tickets, which I think is what he was talking about. So we've come up with some ideas and suggestions on how he can deal with that in a more, let's say, transparent fashion. So the, I did speak with the partner at the, at the audit firm. We are going to be doing, since this is, as I said in the beginning, June of 2020, we're going to be doing June of 2021, which is almost a year old, and June of 2022, which isn't quite here yet. We're going to do both of those audits at the same time and hopefully have both of those audits done by the time November rolls around. So then we'll be in better shape. We'll be kind of caught up, and we won't, you know, when someone tells you you did something wrong, but it was a year ago, it's kind of hard to take any action on it. So the, the timing of this has, has been difficult. So hopefully, I think, the '21 and '22, the '21 audit, there weren't, there was, we were out of school for part of that year. So I think the activity in total is going to be less. So I expect that to be a little bit better. And then the fiscal year '22 one, which is this year, I think will, will be a lot better. So that is my detailed summary of the audit.
Do you have any questions, Ms. Brown?
We talked about the credit cards last year, didn't we?
Yes. Some of these items mentioned in this audit were also mentioned in last, the last audit that was done, but that was over two years ago.
Did we talk about Hawaii back then, too? Somehow, this Hawaii thing, it keeps coming.
The Hawaii thing may have come up, because I think the Hawaii spending is over a two-year cycle. They start collecting the money, let's say, in the spring of one year, and then they, they go the following year. So there probably was some discussion on Hawaii, yes. But it was the same trip.
Because some of this sounds familiar that we talked about before. And this audit, did they actually go into the, to our records and actually audit it themselves, or did they do it off of your information?
No, they'll, basically, we give them all the records, and they go through. Now, they don't look at every single record. They, you know, they audit the records, so they take a sample, and they go through. But yes, we provide the records for all the schools, except for the two high schools. Two high schools, they physically go into the building to look at their records because of the, the volume of records. The other schools box them up, send them to central office. We then give them the boxes. They bring them back to their office, review them, and then bring them back as, as they prepare this audit.
Okay, because I know that I used to work for an accounting firms, two of them, many, many years ago. And they would put down, I think it would be an actual audit or that they audited off of your information. So they didn't actually go in, so they couldn't, the opinion wasn't really there, if I remember this correctly. I think you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, they do. Most audits do samples. They can't, auditors are never going to be able to have time to review every single record. So they do tests, and based on those tests, they provide an opinion. But, and that's what the beginning of this audit says. But it doesn't say, we've, we guarantee you there's no more errors.
Right.
They say, based on our tests, here are our concerns, or we feel comfortable, or...
The language changed a little bit, but it's still the same thing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Ms. Brown? Okay.
I think you should probably do a, to accept the audit, and then do a motion to accept the audit.
I'll make a motion to accept, to accept the SAF audit from 2020.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. The next thing is the quarterly credit card update.
Yes. Per our policy, each quarter, I bring forward to the Finance and Ops Committee a audit of the spending on the credit cards. There are two credit cards that we have. One is in my name, one is in the Assistant Business Manager, Derek Danielson's name. They're kept in the safe, so we don't carry them around with us. And we only use them for specific things. If you take a look at the, the first page, which is this year, the first January, February, and March spending, you'll see that the, the large expenses under travel, $5,851. That was the 21st Century Program. Their coordinators took a trip to their national convention. It was paid for by the grant. So that was, I think there were about seven, seven people that went. I think it was in Florida, I'm pretty sure. So that's what the big expense there is, and obviously, if you're going to use a, if you're going to travel, you need to have a credit card. The advertising line is the Survey Monkey that we, that we pay for each month. And then anything else that we have in there, in equipment or supplies, any of those items are simply items that we either couldn't find somewhere and we bought on an online site, or we could save significant sums by buying it using the credit card. So, and if you look at the previous year, attached is the, the previous year, and you can see there was very little spending there, mainly due to, due to COVID. There was the advertising line for the Survey Monkey. But other than that, not very much spending. So that, just an update of where the spending has been for the credit cards.
Okay, and you don't, we don't need a motion, because this is just an update.
Yep, that's informational.
So the next item on our agenda is the ESAR update?
Yes. So back in November, December, I think it was, we sort of gave, gave an update of where the spending for ESAR is. Now, I have, I have four pages here. If you sort of, or maybe five pages? Yes. So slip back, look at the last page first, and then we'll just run through the, each of the grants. And you can take a look at, these are all the funds we've received from the federal government that have been made available to us, basically due to the COVID pandemic. So we have four items. We had the supplemental amount of $2,156,000. That was the first amount we received. That was not necessarily a grant, because they actually sent us the check, and they gave us two months, November and December of 2020, to spend it. We spent almost all of that on Chromebooks and things related to remote learning, because that was the very sort of beginning of the, well, not quite the beginning, but that was that first year of when we were out. So that was slightly different. Since then, we've had, people call it CARES Act or the ESAR. There, we call them ESAR 1, 2, and 3. They're in the grant management system, so they're managed like any other federal grant. The first one is the ESAR 1 grant, which was for $3.27 million. As you can see, we've pretty much allocated all that. By allocated, what that means is we've put in requests to the state. They've accepted the requests and said, you can spend the money on these items. And we've, we've received funds back on those of $2,545,000. So there's about $700,000 left to get back. But all the funds are allocated, and all those should be spent. That grant ends in September of 2022. But since it's all allocated now, it's just making sure we spend all those funds on the items that we have in the, in the system. And we'll go over the detail in a, in a second. Then there's the CARES 2. That was, that's $12,973,000. We have allocated most of that, $12,179,000. We've only got paid $2,318,000 of that so far. But that grant goes until September of 2023. And then we have the ESAR 3, or ARPA. That is for $29 million. We've allocated about $12.7 million of that and just begun to collect on that, because we've just started using that grant. So now, if we just sort of switch to the individual sheets, the first one in the top left there, it says CARES 1. That's the $3.2 million grant. So what I'll, what I've provided is, you can, there's all kinds of detail, which we're certainly not going to go through all that at the meeting. But if you're looking towards the bottom of the page, it's a summary. So I said, okay, what have we basically used those monies for? So contracted services, student-related contracted services. So services provided for our students. Most of this, a lot has to do with our special education students. We didn't have the staff or the time to provide all the services needed, especially during the remote time period. So $630,000 of that amount was, was, was and is being spent on that. Additional summer programming, summer has two Ms., not one, Daniel. But that's about $89,000 that we've spent on additional summer programs, the first summer and the second summer. We spent $215,000 on different softwares used during the remote time and computer equipment and supplies, mostly. A lot of that was the purchase of Chromebooks and paraphernalia-related. To that, that was $1.576 million. Then the PPE and the filters for our HVAC system, all that type of equipment, was $654,000. We charged some architectural work for HVAC to be done at Franklin Street. That was $28,000. And then miscellaneous, and sort of the indirect. So we get, like, 2.5% of this grant comes back to us, since we're managing it, and it goes, goes as a credit to the operating budget. So that's $79,000. So that's where that $3.274 has basically been allocated. And like I said, most of it has been spent, and most of it has been collected. Questions on that grant? Okay, then the ESAR 2 grant. Once again, there's all the detail, and it's, I've sort of summarized it, if you want to go back and look at the detail, by additional hours, contracted services, software, et cetera. But if you flip to the second page, you can see the summary there. So we've spent, or we've put into the grant and allocated funds, $450,000 approximately for various summer school programs, for the Saturday school that the high school has, competency recovery, a fifth block at the high school, which is for kids that have, were falling behind and that they could come and sort of have one more block after school and spend time with their teachers. So that much money has been placed, set aside for that. There is $446,000 set aside for various professional development, mostly teacher-related. There is, and, and that would be professional development for the staff, where the staff ends up receiving funds for going to the training. Then there's professional development, the contract service professional development. That's where we bring in an outside expert, and that person works with the teachers to go over various programs or services, et cetera. So there's $566,000 in this grant for that. Most of the professional development items are things that Dr. Sarfati is involved with. These are things she would have a lot more individual knowledge of the, of the specific details. Contract services, the next one there in the summary is the mental health of the service. That's $776,000. Most of what that is, is we have a contract with a company called MPA, Mount Prospect Academy. And they've brought in six mental health providers who work with our guidance counselors with our students in the district. So that, that $776 is about a year and a half of the services they will provide. In there, there's also contracted services for special education needs of about $237,000. And there's other contracted services of about $88,000. In the grant, there's also $662,000 of software. And then additional staff. Now, this is, in there, additional staff, there's 8.4 million of additional staff. Now, that number seems a bit high, but that includes, when we put it in the grant, it includes the individual position, a salary associated with that, and then the FICA that's associated with that, the benefits that's associated with that. When you hire a person using a grant, you can cover all the costs for that person in the grant. So we typically put in, we assume a family plan for medical. We do use a salary that is sort of typical for what we would expect for someone like that. The thing about that 8.4 million, if you, if you sort of look at, you can see what, on the second page, there's a whole list there where it says staff, and there's all kinds of different positions. Interpreters, at-risk counselors, freshman transition coordinators. You talked about that last night, based on the job description. A couple of nurses, float nurse, peer coaches, bilingual speech pathologists. So there's a lot of positions in here, okay? Now, the grant can certainly be used for this. It's approved. The thing that we have to keep in mind, you know, two years from now when this grant is in here, you know, there's a lot of positions here. There's a lot of money here. It's not going to simply roll over into the operating budget. So I have been coaching anyone that's been asking all along. The funds are here for a reason. So if you need help, let's say the middle schools want a little bit more help with staff, because the kids coming back from COVID have been struggling, et cetera, that's fine. That's what this can be used for. But these, simply because they're in the grant, does not mean they're going to be here a couple of years from now. You can put them in, they're in, some of them are in for one year, and some of them are in for two years, okay?
So, so obviously, $8 million is a lot. Some of these positions, I don't know that they've actually been approved to add. Were they in, were they part of the list for the operating budget recently? Or is this all, for example, oh, the freshman transition coordinator, that, we talked about that last night. But there's a few other positions that I don't know that we've heard about. Those are totally brand-new positions? Or are we shifting funding from things that are already in the operating budget?
No, most of, most, all of these positions are new positions. There's no transferring from... There's no transferring from operating budget over here. These are all new positions. So for example, the largest item there, 15 ELL teachers. We put that in this budget for this year that's ending now, this school year of '21, '22. We found, I think, one or two of them. So we kept that number in there. But come September, if we can't find these positions, then we're going to reduce this number and use these funds in another way. Because if you put in the grant that you want 15 ELL teachers and you only find five of them, and you don't do anything about it, you'll end up losing the funds. So we'll take those and, and, and move them elsewhere.
So I guess my other question, are we being pretty diligent about recognizing that these are considered basically temporary positions? Because, you know, two years from now, 8 million is going to be hard money to find.
Yes. I mean, I am doing my best. Many of these are not yet filled. Some of them are filled. But as I told HR, when you hire these people, you tell them this is a grant-funded position with potentially in, in two years, it may not exist. Now, that's not a great way to get people in, to tell them, hey, it's a two-year position. Now, the reality is if it's an ELL teacher and you hire them, they may be funded by the grant. If another ELL teacher leaves in the next two years, you can certainly move into their position. So you may not necessarily lose your role. If it's a position, let's say, you know, a float nurse, for example, we're going to have that float nurse, that position, if the, if the individual that takes the role does not move in, that would have to be added to the, to the operating budget or it wouldn't exist. So there's a kind of a combination.
And are there also a fair number of staff included in the contract service positions? I mean, those are kind of like service.
If it was contract, that's why I made the delineation. Contract services would be outside services. So that the advantage of a contract service, you use it, the year ends, it's done, you've moved on. They're not, you know, they might be in your building for a year or two, but then they're gone. They're not your employees, they're somebody else's employees.
Thank you.
I'm noticing in here that you have permanent building subs, 25?
Yes.
So didn't we just hire a company to find the subs for us?
We, we did. Most of the permanent, the permanent building subs is, they're going to take that over next year. When we hired the permanent building subs this year, which that was one of the, the only subposition we were able to actually find most of, I don't think we have 25, but we probably have about 20. So those are people that came in and worked every day in our schools. They were offered, because they were working every day, medical benefits with the city. So they kept, they're still working for us through this year and they will transition over to ESS for next school year. The funding will still, we'll still pay for them in here.
Now, you have a float nurse for 94,758. What pay grade is she at this point?
Well, I think, I'd have to go back and look, but the, the salary for that's probably about 50, 55,000. The rest of that is benefits. It's, it's not, the base salary is not 94,000. That's what all these positions, that's why the numbers look so high because of the benefits.
It's like about $44,000 worth of benefits?
Yep. Well, if you get, if you get a family medical plan, the value of that's like $24,000.
So with the ESER funds two, if you don't use all this money, and I'm going to ask you about the Santa Light, is there any way that we might be able to get that into the schools or use ESER three funds?
What?
So we can, for the, you know, the air purification system?
If we wanted to use that, we could, we could maybe use ESER three funds for that.
Okay, you know, because of robot, I mean, I look at it this way, you know, people still going to get sick and why not keep the schools, you know, more? We spend all the money on the chemicals to clean. And we could do a good job, but you can't do a great job. So that's why, you know, I keep asking about this too.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm wondering if we might be able to somewhere along the line, maybe kind of look at that again and see if there's going to be any place in maybe ESER three if we can't do two?
Yeah, right now, ESER two, we've sort of allocated most of it. Like I said, some of these funds will open up because there's so many staff positions in here. We're not going to find all these people, I would guess, based, unless next year, all of a sudden, everyone's dying to get back into schools. There's a number of positions here that we're probably not going to find. So that will open up money. And we'll probably then change the grant, let's say, come October, November, because if you don't have the person by October, November, you, you know, you're probably not going to end up hiring them.
And I think a lot, and this goes back to, you know, having viruses and bacteria. A lot of people are afraid, you know, from the COVID, you know, come, once winter comes and everybody's locked up. And so that's what I'm thinking more of, you know, how do we keep our staff and our students in the school, you know, not getting as sick hopefully and passing the germs around? And if this can help, then I'm looking at it because I know teachers are afraid, parents are afraid to send the kids to school. This COVID really scared everybody to death here. And I'd just like to see the kids back in school, be in school more than versus out of school. So that's what my, that's why I keep bringing it up. So hopefully, maybe we can find the money and revisit this again, maybe before school.
Okay, well, that sort of brings us to ESER three. So as you, if you take ESER three, that was the, the last page. As I said, we've got 29 million. We've only put, we've only requested 12.7 million thus far. And most of that, if you look at the summary page, 6 million of that, 12 million is for the HVAC improvements at Franklin Street. Okay, Mr. Smith would like to use, since we have left approximately another, like about $16 million, $17 million to use, to, to fix the HVAC systems at Birch Hill and at Main Dunstable. So we're, we're looking at doing renovation projects at those two schools. Those are sort of next in the queue. But I think if we can use these funds, we've got to put the request in. But I would like the board to say, we would like to use, let's say, about 12, 13 million of these funds put towards the HVAC, part of the renovation projects at Birch Hill and Main Dunstable. So if we do that, that will use up a lot of what's left over in ESER three. After we've done that, we can take a look at that Santa Life that you mentioned before. But I'd like to tie down those numbers better with, with Mr. Smith of, because we're going to do a bigger renovation project. ESER won't pay for the whole renovation project, but they will pay for the HVAC improvements. And I think that's a good use of these funds because that's something that's going to last for a long time.
And the Santa Light was a little over 2 million, is that?
Yes, yes. So we can, I have my eye on that too. So, but I think, I think the, Ms. Smith and I talked, I'd also talked to superintendent about this. I said, we'd like to put these HVACs for those two schools into this ESER three. He's fine with that. To do it, you got to put the request in, but there's a series of approvals you have to get. It's not as easy as putting in a staff person or a contracted service. You have a whole list of data that you have to provide before they'll approve it. So we'd like to get started on that simply because of the time that it takes. So even if they do approve it, let's say, come September or so, then it's getting the architect, getting the plans and just like any other project.
Now, I think with the Santa Light, they said they could do it overnight, within a couple of days, the buildings?
Not a couple, I, I think they said if we could tell them by June, they could have it done by the time school starts. So I think it was a two-to-three month thing.
Okay.
So if we can tie down the number sooner than maybe next month, I could bring forward that if there's, assuming there's enough money left. I don't want to make, I don't want to put that in until I think the construction piece is probably a little, little more valuable initially.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown.
Do you, so you, do you need us to direct, do you need the board to make a motion to direct something to?
Yeah, well, I think.
To follow, to follow up with the Santa Light? And what was the other one? And to follow up with the architects to get a draft on the price information?
If the board would approve the use of ESER funds for the HVAC renovations at Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, I think if that could be the, the motion tonight, that can then go to the full board, we can start working on that. And then I said, like, next month, we can take a look at, if we want to do the Santa Life proposal. When I've had, I've put all this together, but I want to, I just want to make sure there's, there's enough money left for that once we get a little firmer numbers. I think Mr. Smith working with Harvey or someone could get a stronger number on the HVAC.
And looks like there's approximately 17 million after this part, this summary is allocated. Do you have a lot of other requests in the queue that is going to eat up that 17 million?
Well, you know, it's interesting, probably not significant ones, no. And when you have that kind of money, you got to spend it on something big. You know, we can't, can't do it on professional development at, you know, $80,000 a pop. I mean, it's, and if you look in here, all the various professional developments, summer learning, staff, all that, there's, we're spending a lot of money on that. But I think it's important, since it's so much money, that we spend on something that's going to be a little more lasting too. We have put money towards teachers and students and helping their professional development and their learning and, but there's only so much you can, you can, you can't spend 49 million doing that.
And is there any of this that needs to be, we're mostly have the project bonded, but for the new middle school projects?
The only, I don't think you can use it for new schools, so I don't think we could use the new school. We can't use it on, on, the only thing we could possibly use it on is a little bit of it for the, if there was some, some of the HVAC work at Penachuk. But then you'd kind of have to carve that out, I guess.
Which I think we just put it, they just put in some kind of new outdoor air purification system in there when they were putting it in. So I think that's actually, we, we kind of thought in advance for that. So you're saying that these actually would be, this would be a good time to do something like that, that's kind of out of the box in addition to those outstanding projects at Main Dunstable and Birch?
Say that again?
No, so, so this would be a good use of funds to do, to use for those kind of projects that are maybe not typically in our deferred maintenance budget because, or?
Exactly.
Project list.
Exactly. And it's, you know, it's a, it's a kind of grant you're only going to get once in a lifetime. Might as well use it for something that's going to last a long time. I just, I, I think it would be a good use to, and, and to do it, since we only have a couple of years, well, two years and five months or so, we, based on the way construction is these days, we have to get started like pretty soon.
So I'll move to, how would you, do you have a special way that you'd like that worded for?
The board would support using ESER three funds for the HVAC renovations at Birch Hill and Main Dunstable schools.
So I move to recommend to the board that we support the use of ESER funds for HVAC improvements at Birch Hill and Main Dunstable. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Now, we have the FY '22 forecast through April 22nd.
Okay, that, that was that large sheet I just passed out to you. So if we go to the, flip it over, I think yours is all on one page. You go to the second page, at the bottom, you'll see a little box. So basically, at the bottom, it says remaining. So my first estimate, now, keep in mind, this number changes. I'll do at least three of these before we wrap up the year. Remaining, I'm, I'm saying we'll probably have a surplus of above 451,000. So last night, you approved the track at South and 400,000 was covered by deferred maintenance, so we needed to find 100,000. So of this 451, you will use 100,000 for the track. But just to sort of run through this sheet quick, as I always say, most of our spending is up on this top section, the salaries and wages. So if you look across the very top line, wages full-time, everything through April is actual expense. That's, the month's over and we've had the actual expense. You'll see in the month of May, the full-time wages go up to 8.45 million dollars. Now, the reason for that is the teacher's contract, the retro for this year is in that month, and the new rate that everyone has for the first time is in that month. So that's my estimate at this point in time. In June, there's a couple of payments. And the way teachers get paid, it's either you get paid in 22 pays, 26 pays, or 26 with a lump sum. 26 with lump sum means that you get your four checks that you would get in, over the summer, you get paid in June. So they just sort of pay you in advance. So June is always a high month. So that's my estimate for that. And then where it says summer slash escrow, those are the four pays that the teachers that get paid throughout the year. So they get paid every two weeks, so the July and August are for this school year. So those, those are the, the total numbers. This was my first run at these numbers. I don't have what the retro number is yet. I'll have that like next week. So when I bring this again next month, these numbers will be firmed up and I'll have a lot better number. But this was typically, I'm conservative when I do this. You know, I'll throw in a couple extra, 200,000 or 300,000. I got, I got an estimate on Derek, but he's still working on it. So I don't, I don't like to hold people to things before they're done, so. But I think all in all, we'll, we'll be okay there. But if you take a look at that whole section, the third column from the left where it says remaining, it basically has a negative 88,907. But since, like I said, I'm, I think I'm being conservative, I think that will turn around and be a positive number, not a negative number. But for this, for this project, I, I left it at that minus 88,000. Then the next section, the fringe benefits, when you go back and look at that box, you notice that the top of the box says there's 3.3 million left, but the FICA, the ME, the pension, those are all city costs. So if there's any extra, we don't get to keep that. So that shows we're going to have $2.9 million extra, but we're really not. And I don't spend a lot of time trying to forecast those because if it's more, it's, it's costs that are going to get done at the city anyway. So in that, I am projecting we will have some money left in the educational assistance because there's not that many teachers taking courses this year. The next section is the professional and technical services. That, I'm projecting about 87,000. Most of that is the last line, the contracted services. We had a contract with the youth council, which was doing suspension services for the middle school kids. We changed that program midway through the year, and that's, that work's being done at the Boys and Girls Club now with the high school kids. That's in the ESER grant, that new program. So there'll be some savings in this line for the youth council. That's why that line will have a, a balance. The next property services, sort of two things to mention. You can see in the remaining line, there's a negative amount in the heating gas. We did borrow some money from that account early in the year to buy some computer equipment that we could get at, at 40% of the cost. And then we're supposed to receive those monies back. We've yet to receive those monies back. Talked with Greg Rodriguez another, about a few weeks ago. The monies should be here any day now. I said, Greg, we need, we need to get those money in this year. Because he said, oh, there's another opportunity this spring. I said, no, I'm not, I'm not lending you any more money until you bring back what you're supposed to have. So that showing as a negative, I'm hoping. I'm hoping that money's coming in, so it should help it, but. And then the other thing about that, there's a number of Sean's accounts there. Some of them are under budget, some of them are over budget. But as a group, his maintenance accounts will all net to, they, they won't go negative, because they're all, they're all looked at as one, because they're all in that group of the 54 accounts, the property services. Next, the other services. We're expecting to have like $380,000 left. Most of that is in the transportation. Now, we typically don't have quite that much left, though, and I'm going to dig a little deeper on that. But with the fewer out-of-district students, we've had fewer out-of-district buses and things like that. So, we've saved some money there. Will it truly be the 281,000? Maybe not, but we will have surplus in transportation this year. And for the first time since I've been here, that tuition out-of-district line, we're probably going to have a little balance in that, instead of being down by between $400,000 and $900,000. It's kind of interesting. We'll see how that goes next year. And then flipping over to the other page, which is the, the supplies and materials, mostly small accounts. Most of that spending takes place at the schools. I'm projecting about $88,000 left over, because the, every school doesn't spend all the money. But I don't really worry about that, because it's mostly small dollars, and some schools will spend it all, some won't. The indirect costs, that shows a positive 105. We're going to get back more money because of the spending of the ESER grants. We get that indirect cost. So, that's going to be a savings to the operating budget, and I'm guessing about $100,000. That, in a sense, you could assume that could be the money we effectively are going to use towards the track, which. Then the equipment lines, I'm showing $31,000 left over. There probably, you know, most people are going to spend a lot of that down. There's probably some money at, at Central Office that won't, but, so I'm estimating 31, could be a little less than that. So, then that brings us down to that, right at the bottom there, it says estimated a 3.3. You take out the benefit lines, which go to the city, and it's 451. So, it is the first shot. Like I said, I'm being conservative, so I think we're fine. This does include in it the $1.3 million supplemental authorization from the city when they approved the teacher's contract to cover. As you can see, we need some of that money to pay for that contract. So, that does include that in here. And next month, if that number's a bit higher, because I'm a little conservative on the revenue, I may bring forward a couple of ideas to maybe spend some of the extra money we have in the operating budget. I've talked with Mr. Smith. I'm looking at things that we probably wouldn't get to do. I told him sort of shovel-ready things. He does talk a lot about how he doesn't have enough money in deferred maintenance, and that's very, very true. So, I'm thinking things like that. Because with the ESER funds, there's really not another, the schools don't have lots of needs, they just don't. What's that?
Oh, balls, we dropped it.
Well, that's the city. And that's the first shot at the forecast.
Maybe we can get some new chairs or get them cleaned in here. That's what I keep saying. I mean, they're so old. And last year, I want them cleaned at least. Last year, we did the central office. We cleaned that up a little bit.
Yeah, we, we painted it, and we, we put in new carpets, which are nice. And we still have a little bit left, and I might, I want to fix the kitchen, because it's kind of dumpy. Take down the crappy cabinets that one of them, you put a plate in, it falls right through. So, we could probably do it pretty cheap. We're not going to, we're going to use like the cheapest stuff you can find.
Okay. So, is there any questions on the forecast? Okay, we don't need a motion. This is just for informational purposes.
Yes, yep.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the April FY '22 financial report.
Okay. And since I went through the forecast, I sort of already went through this, so I don't think I have to do that again.
You can skip that.
Yep.
And now, the last on the agenda is FY '22 April transfer report.
Okay. So, we'll run through these quick. There's about 10 of them, I believe. The first one is Assistant Superintendent's Office. So, this is Dr. Sarfati, the curriculum budget. She had some additional hours, money that she didn't use, and she wants to move it down and purchase some books. So, that's what the 2,100 is. The next one is the CTE. You've been seeing these for the last months, where they're, they have their open POs that are running out, so they're moving money from various accounts to cover the open POs. That's one of many. I think we've had those at least for six months running now. Next one is Fairgrounds Elementary, and they're using some of their, the 5,500 series, which is, supplies. Other services, money they didn't spend, and they're putting it into their 71800, which is a furniture line. They're going to be purchasing some furniture at the end of the year. The next one is the Penachuk Middle School, and they're just combining, they're taking, they had a little money left in their equipment line, and they're putting it into supplies. So, they'll buy supplies for the school. The next one is from the Brentwood School, and they're taking money from supplies and purchasing some student lockers for that building. Next one is the Athletics, and Lisa is moving money from some transportation and rental lines that she didn't use this year, because the programs didn't require them. And she's buying a safety collar for the new pole vault equipment. Don't know exactly what that is, but I'm sure Lisa does. Then there's one from South, and they're taking things from a periodicals line. This is all their budgeted money, and they're moving it to Ed Supplies to buy stuff for the media center. There's another one from South, where they're using, they're taking, as you can see it, they say closeout budget to prepare for spend down. So, the top part shows you, those are accounts where they didn't spend the money, and then they're moving it all into the 61135, which is supplies. So, they're going to take the money they didn't spend in their other accounts and buy supplies. And then another one from Brentwood for 1,100, and that's to purchase a desk and chair for the, the gentleman running the program, Mr. Warren. And the last one is to purchase technology apparel. So, not one that I typically see a lot of, but they are purchasing short-sleeve polo shirts for their staff in the building, so everybody knows who they are. Now, you could use a badge. So, I'm not a huge fan of this one, but it was already put through, and they've already made the purchase, so.
I guess I have to ask Mr. Rodriguez, are we ever going to see those Chromebooks that never came back? Are they history buried and gone?
I would bet the ones that, the ones that never came back are probably never coming back. The key is going forward, making sure that when we give them out, we get most of them back. I mean, there are, sad to say, there are some families you give them to, and you're just not going to get them back. But we wouldn't give them another one, I would hope.
Okay. And we need a motion to accept this?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move to accept the transfer report, FY '22 April transfer report.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else?
That is all I have for the night.
Ms. Brown, anything else? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're adjourned at 7:05. Thank you.